Will the clerk please take the role?
Mayor Baker.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Van Ness.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Sperry.
Here.
Councilmember Curtis.
Present.
Councilmember Herbig.
Here.
Councilmember Danuski.
Here.
Thank you.
In order to keep things right, I need to adjourn the special meeting and bring the regular council meeting to order. And at this point, I'd like to recognize my mentor and former mayor, Steve Caldwell. The Honorable Mr. Caldwell, would you please lead us in the flight salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mayor. All right, next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. And if there are no objections, the agenda will stand approved as written. Next item on the agenda is citizen comments. This is your opportunity to express your issues, your views on issues that are important to you and to the community, and we ask that you please limit your comments to three minutes. Well, the clerk, please call the first person.
Joe Levine.
Thank you. I'm Joe Levine, representing the management and ownership of North Point Highlands Apartments and Fernwood Trails Apartments in Kenmore at 1751283rd Place Northeast. We have about over 150 residents that we house in Kenmore. And I'm here this evening just to express our comments regarding a letter I sent to council last week and to the city manager, Rob Carlinsey, regarding the SR 522 Stage 3 Improvement Project that is under the management of the city of Bothell. In brief, we were contacted by the city of Bothell a couple of years ago about adding a bat lane to the north side of SR 522, which runs right in front of our apartment property. And we cooperated with them on their studies and a survey of our property. We received a notice in May of this year, a CEPA notice, that of insignificance or non-determination of any mitigation to our property. We've experienced a lot of road noise on our property, significant amount of road noise that is now to the point of where residents, we've had some residents actually move off the property because of the noise in one and two of our buildings that sit right off SR 522. With the proposed bat lane, the bus lane, on the north side, it will bring the buses closer to our property, which will increase the noise even further. We made contact after we received the CEPA notice of insignificance from the city of Bothell. We reached out to try and sit down with them and have a conversation, and we sent letters to them in May. Unfortunately, they didn't respond to us and weren't willing to discuss it with us. So we had no choice except to appeal their CEPA determination, and it's currently under appeal. In the noise study that they produced, they identified seven sites that were receptor sites with the most impact. Three of them are residential apartment properties along SR 522. One of them that has a very significant impact is our property, North Point Highlands. The two other residential properties are in the city of Bothell, the Ivorywood Apartments, and a condominium complex that's outlined in their report. What we were concerned about is that in their report, they did noise studies on their two properties in Bothell, extensive noise studies on the two receptor sites, but they didn't do any noise study on our property in Kenmore. And in their report, they identified that the addition of a bat lane would increase noise, but for reasons unknown to us, they didn't conduct any noise studies on our property. And we're not sure why, other than perhaps they didn't have any solution for mitigation, or at least they indicated that in their report. We've been trying to contact their public works department, but again, they have not responded to us. We're reaching out to city council because this does directly impact our residents in the city of Kenmore for assistance and hopefully having some dialogue with the city of Bothell in a productive conversation of how we can mitigate this noise impact and what they're proposing as far as a bat lane. We're not opposed to a bus lane. We think improved transportation is probably a benefit to residents. It's just we have a concern that the noise level is at such a level that it's really having a major impact on our residents. So we're hoping that the council will assist us in this effort to have some productive dialogue and come to hopefully a mutually beneficial solution. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Levine.
There's no one else signed up?
Anybody else wishing to be heard? Anybody else wishing to be heard? Thank you for the comments, Mr. Levine. I'm sure that, city manager?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Levine, for your expressing your comments. A couple of things that I've done so far is I've notified the Bothell city manager of Mr. Levine's concern. Mr. Levine and I met this afternoon and discussed the issue, and soon after he and I met, I put in a call to the public works director for the city of Bothell. And so hopefully I'll be able to get an opportunity to talk with her this week. Mr. Levine wants the city of Kenmore to facilitate, or at least encourage, Bothell to hold a face-to-face meeting with Mr. Levine. And we can certainly encourage that. Bothell may resist because this is now under appeal, and they may not want to comment informally on this, and they might want to leave it up to their attorney. I don't know. But when I contact and actually speak with the public works director, I'll learn more and see what they're willing to do, and I'll get back to Mr. Levine.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carlinsey. Next item on the agenda is consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any comment? Hearing non-alts in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda stands approved unanimously. Next item on the agenda is discussion of possible approval of the Kenmore 2016 and 17 federal legislative agenda. Ms. Housley.
I seem to have gotten a short chair tonight, so, excuse me. Thanks. Before you is a draft federal legislative agenda for the remainder of 2016 and the year 2017. And it continues several of the things that the city has been working on at the federal level for the last several years. And I will say that I think our experience at the city, having been working with a federal government relations representative since now it was 2009 when that contract was first developed, the benefit of having a consistent presence at the federal level, both when it comes to federal agencies and obviously our congressional delegation, both in the D.C. office and the district office, I think is very, very valuable because it builds relationships. It's, they get to know what our situation is, what our world is like, and what are the, what issues we are working on. So I think we've all learned that particularly in the federal environment is that very little happens quickly, and so having relationships and knowing that people in those offices and in those agencies have a level of understanding of what the situation is here and what some of our issues are is very valuable. So with that, we always like to stay nimble so that when issues do pop up, we can be responsive to them. But you'll see in this draft agenda that we're continuing to keep vigilant about the conditions in the Kenmore Navigation Channel, which of course is a U.S. Army Corps of Engineers facility in need of maintenance dredging. And then transportation funding continues, obviously, as an issue. This year, you'll notice we have added Lake Point Transportation as one of those things that we want to get on the federal radar screen. Don't know what the actual configuration or facilities would be, but it's never too early to let people get aware of how important this is going to be for the future of the city. And then, of course, continuing our emphasis on pedestrian and bike safety improvements. There may be grant funds that are available in the coming year plus that we want to keep vigilant about. And then another new one is, you'll see, is the land and water conservation modifications that we have just started working on. And this became an issue with the West Semamish Bridge project. And we've gotten some encouragement from consultants that we've been working with, engineers, and also some agency staff about making some modifications that could help not only our project but other projects around the country. And so that's something that we've added. Senator Cantwell is in a pivotal role on the Energy Committee that is looking very soon at land and water conservation fund issues. So that could be one of the quicker ones, or not. We'll see. Kenmore Air temporary flight restrictions. I think this is an example of something that has, we have been working on for several years. Mayor, deputy mayor, other council members have met with now governor, but formerly the congressman for this district, and he took a real interest in what happens with Kenmore Air operations when a dignitary comes to town and the airspace shuts down. So we were happy to hear that just a few weeks ago, when there was a presidential visit, that some of those restrictions were modified on a trial basis to see, you know, how things work. So I think that's a testament to your attention, Mr. Mayor and Deputy Mayor, and so we'll keep an eye on that. Another new item is another major employer in town, Bastier University, and their issues at the federal and probably state level as well kind of center on supporting natural health sciences education and research accreditation. But also, and you don't see this in the draft, but I was in conversation with the chief of staff of the university, and she was out of the country when we were developing this draft, and so it was already in the hopper when she got back and had a chance to look through it. And they are suggesting that the council consider just adding a short language addition to that to add the words after accreditation, equal access to licensed complementary and integrative healthcare providers. And they are doing some work with a national association as well as on their own at the university to see that federal coverage, VA and Medicare are open to having integrative care and naturopathic physicians be part of the choices that are offered mainly, I think, in pilot programs at this point. And so that is one request that the university has, but they're happy to be part of our legislative agenda. And then, of course, identifying and pursuing grant funding and monitoring discretionary budgets such as community development block grant continue. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions and make any additions that you're interested in.
Councilmember Curtis.
I guess my only concern as I read through it, it just seemed a little long.
Yeah.
It felt like we were adding things, and it seems like focus maybe increases the chance of getting what you want.
Mm-hmm.
So that was my first concern at a high level. And then I guess I would be concerned about supporting Bastier, not because I'm against naturopaths, but if you open the door for more writers to take more federal funds, it's a huge budget implication. And I just don't know if we want to get into that, supporting huge changes to healthcare dollars. So I guess I would stay out of it for that reason.
Are you referring to the added language?
The added language. I'm good with what's here.
Okay. Thanks.
Councilmember Danuski.
I guess just one question I have is a lot of this are more statements rather than asks. Do we want it that way, or do we want, especially like the transportation things, are more kind of statements of where we're at rather than asking for anything? I don't know if that's the way we want to do it or not.
I think they could become asks pretty quickly. One is when we have a better idea of what the final cost for the Semamish Bridge will be, and as well as the Lake Point continues. But I am picking up that maybe we should structure this in the same way, or a little bit closer to how our state legislative agenda is structured, that has some, you know, like three or four, you know, like real priorities and then more policy statements in kind of a separate section. So that's one possibility.
Councilmember Herbig.
I'm not saying I'm opposed to having the Bastier language in there. I just wonder on a philosophical level, when do we get to the point where we're asking for something that helps the city versus where do we cross the line into we're making an illegal donation from us, you know, to the university at some, I mean, where's the line there?
That's a good question.
So on the Kenmore Air note, the one thing is this time, Secret Service did call Kenmore Air before the president came to town. They set some ground rules, and my understanding is that they were extremely pleased with Kenmore Air and the fact that there was no breach of anything, that they couldn't fly, I think it was south of Arrowhead Point, they kept all of their operations up here. They got compliments from Secret Service after. And Cantwell's chief of staff, Travis Lumpkin, is going to be talking with me, we're going to have a debrief, and I think this may be something that will be carried forward with other visits. So we're all very optimistic on this.
And I remember some of those early conversations that it was just people just going like, oh, this is so complicated, and multiple federal agencies are involved, you know, best of luck. Yeah.
Yeah. But we didn't, we never let up. We just kept going back there, being nice, and I think with the deputy mayor, and then I think that we finally, they're listening to us. So they got tired of us, I think. All right. Any other questions? Councilmember Sperry.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Housley, is this designed for a communication tool to our government relations representatives?
Yes.
Okay, so it's not necessarily something that's being handed out to lawmakers?
Oh, it definitely can be handed out and often is.
So that does kind of, I think, bring up the point that was mentioned earlier, that really having our top priorities identified and then, you know, maybe the things that we kind of keep going on every year separated or something, more focused.
We can definitely work on this in the interim to restructure.
Yeah, I think that's one of the, we continue to get compliments on the way that our state agenda is and how focused it is and whatever, and it'd be nice to see it carried through, both in the federal and the county, so that we've got definite asks and definite direction.
Yeah.
Anything else?
Okay.
Thank you.
That's good feedback.
So basically, then, the question is, do we want to adopt this agenda? I mean, is this, we're in agreement with this agenda. So do we need a formal motion to approve the federal legislative agenda for 16 and 17?
If the council is ready, I'm picking up that you'd like to see some restructure of it, maybe the items themselves are okay, but a restructure. So I'm fine either way. We have a few weeks to work on it.
I think we're all satisfied with the agenda itself. It's the structure that we'd like changed a little bit.
I guess my thought is if there's no pressure, I'd like to see the finished form, but...
Yeah, that's fine.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
So then, next item on the agenda then is adopt resolution number 16-285, appointing pro and con committee members to write statements for the local voters pamphlet on the bond measure for walkways and waterways improvements. Mrs. Harris.
Good evening, Mayor and city council. In June, city council passed an ordinance authorizing a submission of the walkways and waterways improvement bond measure on the November 8, 2016 general election ballot. For the King County Local Voters Pamphlet, the city is responsible for appointing pro and con committees to prepare statements in favor of and in opposition to the ballot measure. Pro and con committees can consist up to three members, but the committee can have an unlimited number of persons assisting them to prepare the statement. We received a total of eight applications from Kenmore residents. Three people expressed interest in serving on the pro committee, and three people expressed interest in serving on the con committee, with an additional two people expressing interest in just providing feedback to the committees. So in your packet is resolution number 16-285 for council adoption. It points the following persons to prepare a statement advocating the voter's approval of the measure, Barrett Aldrick, Mark Ornsall, Nicole Suarez, and appointing the following persons to prepare a statement advocating the voter's rejection of the measure, Steve Caldwell, John Hendrickson, and Todd Prince. Once the committee members have been appointed, I will follow up with the committees individually to review deadlines and rules related to the voters pamphlet statements per our requirements.
Questions, comments?
It sounds like we lucked out in having three of each who wanted to write this thing. If we'd ended up with a smaller number, we'd have been in trouble. So I'm pretty happy with how we turned out.
Okay.
Any other comments? So then I guess the chair will entertain a motion to adopt resolution number 16-285, appointing committee members to prepare arguments advocating users' approval of the measure, and committee members to prepare arguments advocating voter's rejection. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Sperry.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Danuski.
Yes.
Councilmember Herbig.
Yes.
Councilmember Curtis.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Van Ness.
Yes.
Mayor Baker.
Yes.
Seven zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is adopt ordinance number 16-0425, ordinance of the city of Kenmore, Washington, adopting new chapter 5.45 of the Kenmore Municipal Code relating to business licenses for massage businesses and practitioners. Mr. Hampson.
Good evening, Mayor, deputy mayor, and council members. Before you tonight is a revised chapter 5.45 which relates to business licenses for massage practitioners and massage businesses. And just in general, I'm going to go through the changes, and if you have any questions at the end, feel free to ask. But in 2015, July 27, 2015, we modified section 5.05 of the Kenmore Municipal Code, which is the general regulations for business licenses. And so major part of this code cleanup was to align our massage practitioners and business licenses with those 5.05 regulatory general requirements. In addition to that, our city attorney went through and looked at some other terms and definitions of businesses that relate to these types of businesses as today's, what are called today, and added those into our code, and so those would be covered. They've also took a look at our denial and, I forget the other term, sorry.
Revacation.
Revocation process. And there were some differences between them and some questions that were raised because from one of our recent hearings. And so the attorneys went through the chapter to clean it up and answer most of those questions that had concerns about them, and so that's what this really consists of today. Generally, that's all the changes that were made to the chapter, so if anybody has any questions, I'm available to answer them.
Councilmember Sperry.
Has there been any comments from the existing businesses that provide massage in the city?
Not related to these changes, but the only way that they would have known about the changes are, you know, through our website. So we didn't reach out to the businesses directly and send them the revised code language.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilmember Curtis.
As I read through it, the only thing that I found surprising was that nurse practitioners and manicurists somehow ended up in the same sentence, but once I read the details, it all made sense.
Okay, good.
Any other questions? Another discussion? If not, chair will entertain a motion to adopt ordinance number 16-0425, an ordinance of the city of Kenmore, Washington, adopting a new chapter 5.45 of the Kenmore Municipal Code relating to business licenses for massage businesses and practitioners.
So moved.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please take the role.
Deputy Mayor Van Ness.
Yes.
Councilmember Sperry.
Yes.
Councilmember Herbig.
Yes.
Mayor Baker.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Danuski.
Yes.
Councilmember Curtis.
Yes.
Seven zero. Thank you.
Next. Next item on the agenda is staff reports, report on Twin Springs Park opening. Ms. Gordon.
So I'm here to give you a report about Twin Springs, and the city is now the happy owner of that park. That property was transferred officially in May, so now we need to figure out what to do with it. So the memo we provided you was sort of giving you the staff recommendation that we keep officially the park closed for several reasons. One, until we get the opportunity to really flesh out what we need to do on an interim basis. And secondly, that we are able to fully understand what the resources are needed to maintain that facility on an ongoing basis. So that's the short answer. So we are here this evening to answer any questions you may have on the staff recommendation. Thank you.
Guess we have nobody.
It's a free-for-all. Go ahead.
Councilmember Sperry.
Two things. Well, first, so it looks like from this that we're recommending not doing any work on this until next year, is what I'm hearing you say. And, correct. And then the fall. Okay. The second thing is that I was reading through this, and I also happened to be reading a book on... book on, I think it's called Bold or something, about, you know, the waste business and doing things is changing with the internet and just the technology. And I thought, boy, this sure seems like the same thing I've seen for 10 years, you know, spend a bunch of money on a consultant, spend a bunch of money on a master plan, then try to find the money to build it, and I thought, you know, wouldn't it be fun, since we have some time, to see if there's a way we could leverage some of the new technology or, I don't know, crowdsourced planning or something, to try it out on this park? So I'm just throwing it out there, just a thought.
Councilmember Curtis?
So as I read through it, it made sense to me. It's a big park, it's going to be a fairly expensive project, like all other big ones, and I would rather stay focused on some other things and do it well, rather than try to spread ourselves too thin and do it poorly. Right now, the citizens have not assumed, you know, I'm sure teenagers have hung out on that park, but they've not assumed it's an open park for open access, so to just leave it that same status, I think, is the way to go until we decide what we really want to do.
Councilmember Danuski?
Yeah, I guess I'm excited that we're doing an interim solution on this and not, you know, having the whole master plan hold things up for years of opening it, so I'm excited to see that process start.
Right now, the park has above-ground irrigation going across it. We'd like to leave that in place for now, to make sure the plants get established, but we can, we might be able to move or remove that irrigation in the next year or so. Would you agree, Jennifer?
Yes, or if we feel like it's something we want to hang on to, we could bury the main line that's going up there. I think there's two, is there two main lines that are going across the field? We could underground those, so there's a potential we could keep it. I mean, it would be really difficult to get water back there otherwise, so if plants still need to be irrigated, I would recommend that we just underground that, those main lines, and then it wouldn't be a non-issue for safety.
Yeah, and even though we're not officially opening the park, right now on that north driveway, there's no gate, and so there's nothing to stop people from walking onto that public property, and we certainly aren't going to trespass people if they're, if they happen to walk their dog through that property.
Councilmember Sperry?
Well, I've walked it several times, and when I went by it most recently, I was so surprised how much the trees and all that have leafed out and how much less visibility that there is, so I haven't really been up there to look at it. But one thing is, there is a fair amount of grass. Is that something we're going to have to mow or take care of before we?
If that is the, you know, direction we want to go and level service that you're asking for, yes.
So at this point, it would just be whatever happens, happens, you know, it'll grow up and die and that kind of thing, more of a, like a meadow or something?
Yes, like Wall Swamp Creek Park. We really don't do a lot of maintenance mowing out there, except for along the paved, the paved trail that goes between 73rd and 68th. That's essentially the only mowing we do there.
So it is a resource issue, so if we were to ask Jennifer and her team to start mowing that grass, then that's a new resource that comes into play, and it's kind of a zero-sum game, so we would have to either have or not do something else, or add some sort of budget.
Well, moving forward, sometimes people, they just mow a trail through it, you know, so you have a way to walk, not, I'm not asking for that now, but it might be a compromise where you can create some walkways, but not have that level of, you know, mowing a lawn, which is hugely labor-intensive.
Any other questions? Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Next item on the agenda is to update an agreement with KGM at the Kenmore Industrial Park regarding the 522 floating bridge, or 520 Floating Bridge Project.
Thank you, Mayor and council. It's been about a month since you directed us to enter into the settlement agreement with the Kuwait General Manson Joint Venture Group regarding the Kenmore Industrial Park. So I wanted to give you an update on the settlement agreement and the activities that are going on at the site. And so, KGM has performed offloads, so they have brought in barges full of concrete rubbleized material and offloaded those at the Kenmore Industrial Site. And two of those occasions, the city staff was there and witnessed and observed the activities. And from what we've seen, we don't see any deviations from the settlement agreement. They seem to be following it pretty, pretty to a T. There's a couple portions of the settlement agreement they're still working on, the noise monitoring and the truck weights, they're still getting that information, but generally speaking, they're complying to the settlement agreement as it was agreed to. I don't know if anybody had any specific questions about any of the activities that are going on at the site, or anything else of that nature.
Councilmember Curtis?
So one of our concerns was protecting the water and protecting the land from them dumping things on the ground. How are they addressing those two issues?
So the settlement agreement required them to create a large enough space on the barge to be able to get the trucks on and off the barge, and they are doing that using little smaller barges, but they're taking off some of debris. But until they get the barges onto, or excuse me, the trucks onto the barges, they are scooping up the concrete rubble on the barge with the front-end loader driving them off the barge and dumping into a side-load dump truck. And from what I've seen, you know, nothing has been coming out of the loader, coming out of the dump truck and hitting the ground. And another part of the settlement agreement required them to control the dust and the water that was used for the dust control, and so as long as the city staff has been out verifying and observing the business practices that KGM has been doing, there have been continuous water hoses, in some occasions, more than one, but at least one water hose that was used to control dust, so I didn't see any dust going into the atmosphere. And what I actually saw was, because of the concrete rubble was so dry, that, you know, small garden hose that they were using, the concrete material was capable of absorbing most of that water, and I didn't see any water leaving the barges, getting into the lake. And from what I saw on the construction of their barge, they had a four-inch lip that was installed around the barge, so it could contain water if there was enough water that got onto the barge. And if there was enough water that was onto the barge, they did have a tank and a pump that was available to be able to pump it off the barge. I didn't see the tank or the pump in operation, but I expected if there's a heavy rainfall or some kind of more activities, that they're using more water, and they do use that tank, then we should be there to observe it, or, you know, they'll let us know when they're doing that, and we can follow up with them, with you guys after that point.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Herbig?
So when we approved the settlement agreement at that meeting, I remember asking staff what citizens should do if they heard activity down there, if there was noise in the middle of the night. And what I remember staff telling me was that they could call the police, and they could also leave a message here, and we could look into it in the morning. Since then, we've had some folks who have experienced or think that they were hearing noise from down there, or maybe it was from the cement plant, it's hard to tell when you're up the hill. And when they called the police, what they were told essentially is that the police won't look into it at all. Now, I got the email that you got from Chief Sethur earlier, and what his email says is that during regular patrol, if they happen to be driving by and they happen to hear noises, to record it, and I guess that's a step in the right direction, but it still isn't a positive response to citizen complaints, which in large part leaves both our industrial noise ordinances, our operating hours, and the settlement agreement largely without teeth in the middle of the night, and that, I have to say, kind of concerns me a bit. I think it's a separate direction. The chief is willing to at least have his folks report if they happen to drive by, but if there's an issue with our code, maybe the city manager can help me out with this. So, Rob, we talked about this a little bit, and you had said that the chief, on advice from his council at the sheriff's department, was told that not to enforce noise at non-residential properties. Is that correct?
Yeah, the reason is, is the noise ordinance that the police department enforces is residential, and it was written, instead of using decibels and decibel meters, it's using distance from the source, so if a police officer shows up and can hear somebody singing to their karaoke machine at 2:00 a.m., and they're 75 feet away from that house and they can hear that, then that's a violation, then, so instead of using decibels, they use number of feet away. Our noise code for heavy industrial uses decibels, and our chief tells us that he is, his officers don't have the training or the equipment to respond to decibel-type enforcement.
And that makes perfect sense to me. My concern, though, is that we're still left with this enforcement hole when we're outside of regular business hours, weekends, middle of the night. We really have no way of even sending somebody down to just check on what the noise is that somebody was hearing, you know, at 2:00 a.m., 4:00 a.m., and then at least, you know, report back to Brian to say, hey, this is what I saw. I would really be interested in looking at how we can kind of close that hole in some way, to give chief the tools that he needs to be able to, at least at a minimum, have somebody react to a phone call by at least driving by and taking a report, instead of just taking reports that they happen to be driving by and they happen to hear noise. Because right now, I'm just kind of uncomfortable knowing that we have a big hole in our code, and we're not able to enforce it outside of business hours. I'm just not comfortable with that setup right now.
Sure, and if you all, as a council, desire, we can look into how to close that hole.
I mean, yeah.
I mean, if he's asking a question, I would. I mean, to me, if we're going to have, we went through the effort of talking about noise ordinances and everything, and if we're going to even have them on our books, then we should have some mechanism to allow for enforcement.
Yeah, for nighttime, yeah.
Yep.
Anything else? All right, thank you.
You're welcome, thanks.
City manager?
Definitely need to have one-on-ones this week, so those are all on, and there are no city manager comments on the transportation benefit district agenda, so I just want to remind you all that we're taking August off, and I hope you have a really great rest of the summer.
All right, comments? Initiatives? Yes. Councilmember Smith?
Thank you. I only have one thing to add, and it seems like it was so long ago, but I think it's been since we had our last meeting, and that was I attended the incubator open house, and it was really well-attended, and got to speak with a lot of the business owners and everything, and one of the, one of the business owners stood out, because she, her and her husband have a business, and I was asking her a number of questions about it, and she said, and they started it recently, they live in Kenmore, and she said with the assistance of the incubator, they made a lot fewer mistakes than they would have. She said, "We would have had a number of failures along the way that I believe we diminished that number." And then the other thing she said, which I really liked, is she said it really, they've been here, I think, 13 years, and it was the first time they've ever felt connected to the community, and so I thought that was really nice to hear. And so anyway, that's the only thing I have, and happy summer.
Councilmember Sperry?
Well, I'm glad that Brett brought that up, because it reminded me of how much fun I had at the incubator open house, and just a couple of things there. The, one of the businesses did relocate in Kenmore, so they're not in the incubator, but they did rent, and I was asking them where and how they found it, and, but they're right on 522, and I apologize, I don't remember the name of the actual business. And the other thing was, the quarry that is the consultant there was able to tour me through, and some pretty powerful statements as far as, you know, how much growth rate these companies are experiencing, so it was, it was impressive, actually. It was very impressive.
Councilmember Curtis?
So our Evergreen Primary Care Group had their annual summer picnic over at Roderick Garden Park on Saturday? You were the guys causing all the traffic there, the cars. We had a great time, but there was a neighbor that came across that lives just to the east side of the park, and he said that some years ago, a big tree fell down and smashed the fence, and he was wondering when the fence was going to be fixed. He said the tree had been taken away, but he was wondering when the fence is going to be fixed. So I didn't go over and look at it. He liked our band, but he had a concern while he was there. That's all.
Councilmember Herbig?
Nothing to add.
Councilmember Danuski?
Playdate, it's August 13th. I know a few of you have volunteered to man the snack booth, and as soon as I get a little more details, I'll email that out to everybody.
Wonderful. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you. Last week, I was down on Sun River with my grandkids and the family, and one of the things we did was went up to Bend to the Old Mill District. I don't know whether any of you have been there. It's an industrial site in Bend. It was not really a contaminated waste site, I guess, unless there's contaminated waste that comes from sawmills, but it was a lumbering thing, and it's all been redeveloped now to, just to re-bead a nice, open-air shopping area. And the roads go through it, and you go across a bridge over to the Les Schwab Amphitheater over on the other side of the river. People are going down the river in their inner tubes, and it's just really a delightful place. So if you find yourself in central Oregon, be sure you go down to the Old Mill District. REI, just like in Denver, in Denver, they took over the trolley barn, the old streetcar barn, and turned it into an REI retail store. Old brick, you know, an old structure, and they did the same thing down here in the Old Mill. The old powerhouse is the REI store. So if you get a chance to see it, it's worth seeing. You know, we've got an industrial waterfront that we're redeveloping, and we might get some ideas from that. Other things, like in Sisters, Oregon, things just as simple as the waste cans, the garbage cans. They've got wooden barrels, and then a top that fits on the wooden barrels with the plastic liners in it. But then there's a thing that comes up on top with a, just a little flat sheet metal outline of a cowboy or a horse, or something that sets, you know, the tone for the ambiance of the city. And little things like that really make a difference, as well as the landscaping and the flowers on the corners in a little city like that, that relies on a lot of visitors and tourists coming in, and I think as Lake Point develops, we're going to see the same kind of thing down here, so.
Yeah, not much, not much to report. Yeah, I can't really think of anything. We're on vacation. Next council meeting is the 12th of September, so 12th of September.
Your honor, do you want to mention a visit that we had from some mayors last week?
Oh, yeah, we did. So I'm, you know, vice president of Sound Cities, and so we had our board meeting here last week, and I've had a real hard time keeping things quiet since February, but we had them here, we had a nice meeting, we had... We had lunch brought in from Hodge Bodge, and we got a, Nancy Meehan was really great and got us a bus from the Kenmore Senior Center or from the senior, North Shore Senior Center. And we all loaded on the bus, and we all went on a tour of the city and all of the fun things that are going on in the city. And Mr. Carlinsey was the one that led the tour for reasons that you'll recognize in a minute. I didn't go on the tour, but we started our tour at Kenmore Air. We got everybody off, and we're going to show them the big, the big garage door and the things that were going on there at Kenmore Air. And when we got off, the Evening Magazine plane was sitting at the dock already and a nice lady pilot, and they all went on the plane, and they had the tour of Kenmore from the air, which was really nice of Kenmore Air to do that. They were just thrilled and excited. They also got a tour of the 520 Bridge and the Space Needle. So, they all were pretty surprised, and I think our city manager had a pretty good time.
Well, it was really fun because it was a unique opportunity for me to have a one-way conversation with a bunch of mayors. So, my headset, I could talk to, I was in the co-pilot seat up there in the cockpit, and so my headset could talk to them, but they couldn't talk back to me. And so, I could just say whatever I wanted with impunity.
So, you know, we've been on tours, we've had this meeting that floats around every month to different cities. So, we've had it. I think the one before this one was down in Auburn or Maple Valley. Where anywhere, there was a potato chip plant, right? So, they all got a tour of potato chip plant, and they got, they got sample potato chips. But I wanted to do something that nobody could ever top, and so I think we pulled it off with Kenmore Air. So, anyway, it was a great surprise and a lot of fun.
How big a group was it?
There was exactly 10, including the city manager. There was a couple that, one bailed out and went to the Mariners game on Wednesday. It was a noon, 12:45 start time. And then, one took off because he had some campaigning to do, and they both were very sorry they did that. I've heard from them, why didn't you tell us? You know, no, it was a big surprise, so, anyway. Anyway, with that, we are adjourned.